City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Hanson.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Somerville.
Here.
Vitale, absent Weaver.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Pelikas.
Here.
That is eight present and one absent, your honor.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing. This public hearing is for a business-ready community grant and loan application to the Wyoming Business Council for a business-ready community business committed grant for Hy-Viz. City Clerk, would you please read the notice?
Notice of a Public Hearing Business-Ready Community Grant and Loan Program Application for a Business Committed Project. The Laramie City Council will hold a public hearing on September 6th, 2016, at 6:30 p.m. in the Council Chambers of City Hall, 406 Iverson, Laramie, Wyoming, regarding an application for a BRC (Business Committed) grant to support the construction of a second building for Hy-Viz Shooting Systems in the Laramie River Business Park II adjacent to its existing building.
Thank you. Are there any members of the audience that wish us to address council at this time concerning this grant application? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move on to the next item. Okay, item number five, excuse me, item number 4C is announcements. Did I skip something?
Yep, the public hearing.
4BI, public hearing, okay, thank you very much. We have another public hearing for a restaurant liquor license for Hero Primo LLC. Once again, City Clerk, would you read the notice?
Notice of Application for Restaurant Liquor License. Notice is hereby given that on the 29th day of August 2016, an application was received in the office of the City Clerk for a new restaurant liquor license, number R59, from Hero Primo LLC, 207 South Third Street, Laramie, Wyoming, the place of the premise being a part of Lots 8 and 9, Block 190, DC Zone, City of Laramie, Albany County, Wyoming. Public hearing to hear comments or protests relative to the application for this license will be held Tuesday, September 6th, 2016, at 6:30 p.m. in Council Chambers of City Hall. Action on this application will be considered at the regular meeting of the City Council on Tuesday, September 6th, 2016, at 6:30 p.m. in Council Chambers.
Thank you. Is there anyone that wishes to comment on this item during this public hearing? All right, well, once again, seeing none, I will close this public hearing and move on to the next item. And the next item would be announcements from staff.
Mayor, there's one announcement.
Honorable mayor, members of council, I just wanted to do a quick announcement. Fire Department underwent insurance service office rating early this summer. We received our results back at the end of August, and our department's improved from a Class 3/9 to a 2/2X. It's a thick report, I'm going to need to go over, they come in and they analyze our department, the water department capability and our communications capability through dispatch, and they have a whole bunch of factors. They put together, spit out a number, our number's 88.76 out of a scale of 100, and if we get to 90, the next go-around, that would put us into a Class 1. So we're pretty close to a Class 1. So that's an improvement, we've always been a Class 3 in my whole career, so we've moved to a Class 2 now. Once I get the information study, get a chance to meet with the other departments, I'll try to squeeze in sometime on a work session and do a short presentation about where we can improve on that score, so.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, that's good.
That's really good.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, disclosures by city council members. Do any council members have any items that would be in conflict, would be of interest that we'll be discussing tonight? The next item, I'll turn it over to the Vice Mayor.
Yeah, okay, here we go. I move that the following change to the agenda be approved. It's on our consent agenda, item 8F, we're adding number 4. We are setting a special meeting on September 27th at 6:00 p.m.
Second.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That motion carries, Vice Mayor.
I move that the agenda be set as changed.
Second.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second by Councilor Somerville. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Once again, Vice Mayor.
I move that the consent agenda be approved and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second.
Thank you, motion and a second by Councilor Somerville. City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Here, yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Vitale, absent Weaver.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Pelikas.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, your honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. We're on to the regular agenda, item number 10, Councilor Weaver.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I move that City Council approve the application for restaurant liquor license, number R59, to Hero Primo LLC, doing business as Eight Bytes Game Cafe, 207 South Third Street, Laramie, Wyoming, for the licensing term September 7th, 2016, through May 7th, 2017, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second by Councilor Henry, and let's go to the City Clerk.
Yes, your honor, this is an application for a new restaurant liquor license. It is at the location on Third Street where the French Place used to be, and the applicant is here. If you have any questions, the application is considered complete by the liquor division.
Thank you, questions for the clerk? Yes, Councilor Hanson.
Thank you, your honor, actually a question for the applicant. And that is, I looked at the menu, very commendable, but do you only serve breakfast? Because it says breakfast, and then I thought some of them don't look very breakfast-y. Is there some, a line missing that should say lunch and dinner somewhere?
And would you also identify yourself for the record?
Honorable council members, my name is Ryan Kaiser. And Councilmember Hanson, there is a lunch and dinner menu. So the front of our menu is our breakfast, which we will be serving all day long. Dinner and lunch will start at 11 o'clock, and we'll go until we close.
Good, I thought they, some of them were lunch and dinner items, the big hamburgers for breakfast is not very.
Well, we have a breakfast burger, so it comes with egg and bacon on top of it.
But the line was missing where it starts, lunch menu or something like that. Thank you, that's all that I have.
You're welcome. And we'd love to invite all of you to come and join us for lunch or breakfast.
Thank you.
Or dinner. Or dinner.
Vice Mayor.
So I just want to tell you, I had breakfast on Saturday, and it was terrific. Thank you very much. Very good, I would recommend, I would certainly recommend giving it a try.
Thank you. Councilor Henry.
So I haven't been there, but I've heard from many folks that it's really, really good, so that's great.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we made sure that the food was a high priority, we found somebody that has a lot of cooking experience to help put together the menu, and I hadn't tried a lot of it until we opened, but I've had pretty much everything on the menu, and I'm biased, but it's all pretty good.
Anyone else?
Your honor.
Yes, Councilor Weaver.
Just quickly, it's a comment, not a question, I just want to say that I think that Mr. Kaiser and his business partners' commitment to and level of patience with both the business climate in the City of Laramie and with city government has been exemplary. I wish everybody had the same patience and tenacity trying to pursue what it is they want to do, and I wish you guys the best of luck, I think it's a great place, I've been down there, I think the food is fantastic, and I really think that you don't always see that level of commitment and tenacity, and I hope it pays off, and I think it will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Weaver.
Any further comments? Any comments from the applicant? Further comments?
No, thank you.
Okay. Would anyone from the public wish to comment on this application? City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Vitale, absent Weaver.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Pelikas.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, your honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. Item number 11, Councilor Henry.
That's me.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that council approve a vehicle-for-hire license to Triplets LLC, owner Joseph Aines, 1856 Harrison Street, Number B1, Laramie, Wyoming, for the period of September 6th, 2016, to December 31st, 2016.
Second.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second by Councilor Somerville. Once again, City Clerk.
Yes, your honor, this is an application for a new vehicle-for-hire license. Within the city, you'll notice the application term goes till the end of the year, so that the application renewal will line up with the rest of the other vehicle-for-hire licensing term by city ordinance. The applicant has successfully passed background, checks with the police department, and everything seems in order.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Clerk?
I'm sorry, your honor, the applicant.
I just have an informational question, how many taxi companies do we now have in town?
We currently have one, this would be the second one.
This be the second one, okay.
And the applicant is here, your honor.
Thank you. Councilor Somerville.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, I think I have a question for the applicant.
Would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Anis Joseph.
Thank you.
I'm just wondering, is this going to be an independent business, or are you going to be working with Uber, or Lyft, or any of those?
It's going to be independent.
Independent, okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions for the applicant, why we have them up here? Yes, Councilor Henry.
So your name is Anis Joseph?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so in my motion, should I change it to owner Anis Joseph, because we have it backwards?
We do.
And I see on the application, it's Joseph, comma, Anis.
My apologies, I did not catch the comma when I, so if you would like to correct it, you certainly may.
Okay, so I, yeah, scrivenor error.
For the record, the motion has been changed to reflect the correct name.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, Councilor Somerville.
Thank you. One question, if we have the name backwards, will we need to resubmit to the police department for background investigations, because that makes a huge difference.
Your honor, Councilor Somerville, no, the police department had driver's license and all those other items to go off of beyond just the application.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Councilor Hanson.
Just a question, how will the public be aware of your existence? Will you be in the telephone book as an entry of the taxi company? How will they reach you?
I'm going to create my website, and I got business cards going already, starting getting.
And will it also be in the Yellow Pages of the?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for the City Clerk? Any further comments by council? Anyone from the audience wish to comment? City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Weaver.
Yes.
Vitale, absent Somerville.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Pelikas.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, your honor.
That motion carries. On to item number 12, Councilor Somerville.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is a bid award for the Banner Road Sanitary Sewer Outfall Project. I move to award the bid for the Banner Road Sanitary Sewer Outfall Project to Simon Contractors of Cheyenne, Wyoming, in the amount not to exceed $2,024,804.10, with a contingency of $300,000. Improve the contract therefore, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign, and to authorize the necessary budget revisions.
Second.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second by Councilor Schuster. Director Smith.
Your honor, the mayor, members of council, the Banner Road Sanitary Sewer Outfall Project runs from approximately Curtis, northerly to the lift station at the wastewater treatment plant. It's a project to replace an existing sewer main, this one will add capacity to our system as identified in previous studies, so it's needed additional capacity. The project was advertised and bid according to the city's purchasing policies. Bids were opened on August 16th. The city received one loan bid from Simon Contractors in the amount of $2,024,804.10. There was an alternate, or an alternate bid item, and that was for an alternative pipe material. It would actually increase the cost of the project, so we're staying with our standard SDR 35 pipe material. The engineer's estimate for the project was a little over $1.9 million, so the actual bid is within 5% of the engineer's estimate, so that's pretty good. The project is right at budget, we propose to utilize the remaining SPT funds, as we need to get those spent out. We are requesting $200,000 from the wastewater fund reserves to cover contingency, along with $106,628 from the water fund. And that additional funding will allow us to do some water main looping that wasn't a part of the original contract, but it'll make the project more constructible, and that was a concept developed by the contractor and engineering staff. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Councilor Weaver.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Director Smith, mostly because I'm curious, since you mentioned it in the presentation, that pipe material that we're going with and that we're using, that's the industry standard at this point in time, I know that's what we've used in all of the newer projects, that's correct, right?
Your honor, the mayor, Councilmember Weaver, that is correct, it's a standard PVC pipe, it's an SDR 35, it's a standard pipe material that's used throughout the industry. It's our standard material.
All right, I appreciate that. And that other material that came forward in the other bid that would have resulted in the price increases, is it just a, is it a newer material that purports to have some advantages, or?
It is a relatively new product, but it's been around for probably 15, 20 years. It's also a PVC material, but it has external ribs, and you might have seen a lot of drainage pipe with external ribs on it, so this sanitary sewer is very similar to that. So SDR 35, which is our standard pipe, is a smooth-walled pipe inside and out. The alternative pipe material is smooth inside, but it has external ribs for additional support and strength.
Well, with being pretty far from an expert, it sounds like you guys made the right call there, doesn't seem to make a substantial difference. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor, I just wanted to get some additional.
Thank you, Councilor Hanson.
Thank you, your honor, I noticed the 10 cents have disappeared in the budget. No problem, as far as I could see. But I have a question, the contingency is fairly high, it's more than 10%, which is usually our customary standard. Are you worried about something?
Your honor, the mayor, Councilmember Hanson, the contingency is slightly higher, we typically request 10%, which is around, would be around $200,000.
Yeah.
So we are asking for that amount of contingency out of the wastewater fund. We're also asking for $106,000 in water fund money to construct some water mains as part of the project, so we're actually adding to the scope of the project slightly, to the tune of $106,000. So that's why the contingency is 300,000 as opposed to 200,000.
And you expect to use some of that contingency money?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Somerville.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I noticed in the recommendation for bid, as well as going through the actual bid breakdown that we had here, there are a couple of items where Simon was substantially higher than the engineer's estimate. For example, traffic control, the engineer's estimate was $69,000, and Simon Contractors came in at $325,000. There's a couple other items that are similar, and I know in the engineer's estimate, it said, or recommendation, they said that those were discussed, but could you enlighten us as to why those are so much more expensive?
Your honor, the mayor, Councilmember Somerville, the construction traffic control is one of those items that's very difficult to estimate, so the engineer had provided a best estimate of what they anticipated the traffic control to be. In this case, Banner Road's essentially a dead-end roadway, so traffic control's going to be a challenge on this project, because we have to work within the confines of the right-of-way and keep traffic moving through the project site, so this particular contractor placed a premium on that line item in particular.
I have another follow-up question. In light of the bidding climate that continues to get a little bit better as we have less and less projects going out, being that we're so close to budget, actually a little bit over, we only had one bid, would it make sense to send this back out for bid?
Your honor, the mayor, Councilmember Somerville, I would recommend that we not do that, and a little background about this project, it's actually been on the books for about 10 years. If you notice in the funding breakdown, there are some grants and loans associated with the project, and there's a long history to the project, I wasn't involved with most of it, fortunately, but this is a long time coming, we do have a good qualified bid here, and I would suggest that we stick with it, because it's, if I tell DEQ at this, down over in Cheyenne, that we're going to go back out to bid, they might string me up, so we really do need to get this constructed soon.
I have one more just a question, thank you, Vice Mayor. On the subject of traffic control, being this, over on Banner Roads, you're going to have truck traffic through there, you're going to have not too terribly much individual car traffic, but are there some standards that we can hold the contractor to in being, in providing that, so that we don't run into issues, which seems to have happened a lot?
Your honor, the mayor, Councilmember Somerville, we follow the recommended practices of the manual on uniform traffic control devices, so there are complete sections on how to establish and set up traffic control, and that's the standard at which we hold the contractor, so it's a national standard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Thank you, Director Smith, are there any comments from the public? City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Vitale, absent Weaver.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Pelikas.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, your honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. Item number 13, Councilor Weaver.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I move to approve original ordinance 1953 to amend sections 9.12.010, 9.12.020, 9.12.030, and 9.16.070 of the Laramie Municipal Code, and set it for third and final reading on September 20th, 2016.
Second.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second by the Vice Mayor. Acting City Attorney.
Yes, thank you, honorable mayor and council. Essentially, the amendments were to clean up some old ordinances that were very, very old regarding houses of prostitution and things like that, and make it more modern, kind of focused on disorderly houses, party houses, loud houses, in addition to providing some kind of intent to the disorderly conduct. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to field them.
Councilor Henry.
I have a couple of questions, so since we took out the houses of ill repute and prostitution, is there another ordinance that governs these?
It's illegal.
Right, right.
It's state, it's good state.
It's just a state thing?
It's in the state law.
Okay, all right.
Or in some cases, federal.
Okay, all right, so number two is in section 9.12.130, item D, I don't have it up in front of me, I just have my notes, it says blah, 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 these people that congregate, and I think it should be congregating, I mean, it's just a grammar, I don't understand.
So that section is essentially meant to prohibit people from congregating in a disorderly manner, to where they would either prevent the free flow on a sidewalk, or prevent the free flow in a street.
Right, so the word you use is congregates, and I think it should be congregating, is my point.
I don't think.
What do you think? No?
No, because it starts with places himself.
I can't even find it.
It replaces himself, or herself, or with another, or others, congregates in or on any public way.
Okay, so if a person congregates with a bunch of other people, then that's not allowed. Okay, got it.
That is, thank you.
Thank you.
Other, other questions or comments?
That was it.
Do we have any comments from council? All right, anyone from the public wish to comment? City Clerk, would you do roll call?
Weaver.
Yes.
Vitale, absent Somerville.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Pelikas.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, your honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. Item number 14, Vice Mayor.
Okay, I move to approve original ordinance number 1949, on third and final reading, amending the Laramie Municipal Code 15.14.050, landscaping and screening standards based on findings of fact and conclusions of law, wasn't in there, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the ordinance.
Thank you, is there a second?
Yeah, second.
There's a second by Councilor Schuster. City staff? Senior Planner Bloom.
Honorable mayor and council, first of all, I'm going to pass out this one handout here received from the CDLC, which is a community and development liaison committee, which is part of the Laramie Chamber Business Alliance, so I'm going to pass this to Councilor Hanson, I think you can take one and pass it down.
Thank you.
Honorable mayor and council, at the last meeting, we had some discussions regarding a couple of different elements. Number one was a sliding scale, number two was public art, and including that in the landscaping table. In this cover letter, you'll see that there are two sections, one labeled sliding scale, and the other labeled public art and landscaping table amendments. Inside these little sections are proposed amendments that you could have someone introduce and read, that would effectively meet that goal. The first section is what would be necessary to amend the ordinance to remove the sliding scale. As you can see, the LEDCCDLC, they took a look at that, they still believe, under comment number 11, that the reduction in this for larger developments is acceptable, they still do like that sliding scale. Being a developer and a group that frequently works with large-scale developers, they think it is still appropriate. In addition, they had a couple of concerns about art, but overall, they were in support of the ordinance as it is. Regarding the public art and landscaping elements, there is an attachment you'll find in this packet, this is right after the ordinance, it is a revised table, it's right before the planning commission, or the memo to the city council, and it's labeled Attachment 3 on the bottom. This is Attachment 3 to the staff report packet here, the council correspondence. What this does is, it proposes a couple of amendments to the landscaping table. Number one, it gives a higher point allowance for lawn grass areas, so say, for example, if you are presently landscaping an area with 800 square feet of lawn grass, under current code, you're only allotted one point. With this proposed change, we've decided to incentivize lawn grass, that for that same area, you get one point for every 200 square feet, so what you would get is four points for that same grass area. And our primary reasoning for this was we wanted to make sure that lawn grass had a higher point value than that for rock mulch. This would encourage more green, more living landscaping, so that's where that ch- So, that's where that changes in this table. In addition, we have labeled, assigned some point values for several other items that are more common. Sculptures, we categorize them by height, so if they're between two to three feet tall, so some smaller statues, one foot, one point for every foot in height, so a three-foot statue, that would get you three points. If something's greater than three feet but not more than six feet tall, you would get two points per foot. So, a six-foot statue would get you 12 points. And if you're going for a sculpture or something that is larger than six feet, you would get three points per every foot in height. So, a seven-foot statue would be 21, ten-foot would be 30. There is a footnote notation behind them, the number two that you see there, that footnote basically requires that the sculptor selection follow the public art process that is adopted in that Laramie Public Art Plan that you guys reviewed late last year. There also is a point valuation for murals with .25 points per square foot, also for water features, and there, that's for fountain area, and there's also gazebos, and then other art we have as determined by department. As I look at this, I see under water feature and sheltering structure, those point values should actually be reversed, sorry, because one says fountain area, one says covered area. So, fountain area and covered area should be actually reversed on the attachment. The point value should stay the same, but those words should be flipped the opposite direction. With that, I'm open to any questions you may have regarding these proposed amendments or the remainder of the ordinance.
Do we want to put the proposed amendments on the floor, or do we want to discuss them before we put it on the floor? Counselor Somerville?
Well, actually, I have a third option that I want to put out to the council here in regards to how to handle the amendments. In discussing things and trying to work out some feedback and some amendments over the last couple of weeks, it is apparent that it would make sense to refer this out to the Parks, Tree, and Rec and our city arborist, as well as the beautification committee, for some feedback. And I don't know if we want to do that pre-amendment or post-amendment. I don't really have a big preference, but I wanted to just put that out there.
Well, last time, we had direction to come up with amendment for landscaping. I would suggest we handle that amendment at this meeting, and if you want to, prior to approval of third reading, move this ordinance.
Assist third.
Excuse me, prior to, yeah, I said, prior to approval of third reading, move this ordinance to committees, then that certainly is an option, too, but it would have to be in the form of a motion. Yes.
My only thought with that is if we go ahead and put the amendments in now, we may get feedback that we might end up changing those amendments again, so.
Yeah.
It's to the council.
Well, throw something on the floor, and we'll see what sticks.
Okay. I would move to postpone this ordinance until, sorry, until October 18th, and in the meantime, refer this out to the Parks, Tree, and Rec, the city arborist, and the beautification committee for comments.
I'll second. Thank you. There's a motion and a second, discussion on the postponement, and I realize some of this discussion may entail discussion of the ordinance. So, Counselor Weaver, and then I'll go to Counselor Schuster.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'll just say quickly, I am in general not always in favor of postponement when we have some things we need to get forward on, in particular when we've already spent a lot of time. In this case, though, I am supportive of this postponement because I have a great deal of respect for our advisory committee up there, and I think they would likely have some interesting feedback and input on this and may help strengthen and make this a better policy. It also occurs to me that I don't think we'll be running up, we may be, but we're unlikely to run up into the landscaping calendar for some projects. Most of those should already be underway, getting finished up as we're in September now. So, I would support this because I think it might benefit the overall policy. Thank you.
Counselor Schuster.
I really love this sheet. That's a part I'm going to tie over. The arborist, I really understand that one. I really don't understand why we're doing Parks, Tree, and Rec, because we're talking about landscaping out in front of a business or something of that nature. These places won't be putting a park in front of their place. So, the arborist, oh, I support that 100%, but Parks, Tree, and Rec, I'm just really confused and don't understand that one at all.
Thank you. I'm going to go to our city manager.
Council, it shouldn't change your amendment necessarily, but I just want to make you aware, our staff process, we work with all other members of staff, so this has been through the arborist. He's seen that already. No harm. I don't think it requires you change the amendment, but just so you know, it's already been discussed amongst staff.
Okay. Before I go back to Counselor Somerville, I'm going to make sure other councilors have a chance to speak. So, have you spoken to this?
I have.
Has any, anyone that hasn't spoken to this would like to speak? And I'll, Counselor Hanson.
Just have a question. You talked about, you know, this table, I guess it's attachment or whatever it is, Table 1514050, and you mentioned that grass business, and it still says here 1.4800 square feet, so it's not been updated yet, right? This would be a suggestion. I just wanted to clarify that because I'm confused.
Honorable Mayor and Counselor Hanson, the next page has the updated table that says attachment.
No, this is the last thing on the, on the, on our attachment.
No, it's in here. I've got it up.
Yeah?
I believe if you're looking on the iPad, there's another document called Proposed Table Amendments.
Oh, okay.
That was, that's the one you would like to look at.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have another observation. I mean, we just got this sheet, and I'm a little uncomfortable. You know, when we begin to judge art, yes, art is always in the eye of the beholder, whether it's art or not art, but I think it becomes, and I come out of a country where art was then degenerated and not, and was judged as degenerate, et cetera. So, I'm very leery of this kind of statement that, you know, we would have somebody judge the quality of the art or whether it is art or not art. That makes me feel very uncomfortable, and I'm sorry about that, but that has led to very unfortunate circumstances.
Okay, and to be clear, that's not in the ordinance?
No. I saw the statement here, and I just wanted to react to it because it came so late.
Right. Counselor, Counselor Shumway.
Thank you, Your Honor. I heard the city manager say that our arborist has already had a chance to review this. I want to make sure that the information that came from our arborist made it to the CDLC meeting so that they were able to include that in their, in their notes to us. And also, I'm in favor of this motion. I want to have the beautification committee, which is very active and very inclusive of a large group of people to look at this. They have always produced some very thoughtful and well-thought-out ideas for us. I don't want to, you know, obviously, this is important for us to make sure that we cover this generally as much as we can so that when we, when we look at this, we can say that we vetted it enough to where we now have a product that we're happy with. So, I'm in support of this, and I guess my question is, has the beautification committee yet dealt with this? Has the arborist passed this on to the, to the information that we've received in this memo so that we really are not just backtracking? Because if we haven't, I'd like to make sure that all of that information is gathered and thought through before we make our final run at this.
Someone from staff?
So, what's in front of you has been reviewed, is my understanding, by the arborist? Any proposed changes are routinely reviewed by our Parks team, our arborist team, so that we're collaborating at a staff level. Do you want to add anything?
But not beautification committee.
Well, beautification committee is technically an outside committee.
Right.
And not part of the city's structure, so no, they have not reviewed it. You received, I think, an email from one member of beautification committee today. So, yeah, we could certainly run it through the beautification committee, but they're not technically a part of our board and commission formalized structure, I guess. They're a part of our informal structure.
Your Honor?
Yes.
The beautification committee includes many members of our staff and the city council, and they, you know, they have always worked very well with us, and so I, again, I want to make sure that we have their input and insight before we make a decision.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
So, I just want to applaud Counselor Hanson's comments. I couldn't agree more. I think you make a very valid point that was certainly missed here, and also, I am in favor of the postponement.
Counselor Somerville?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just a couple of clarifications for everybody. The idea of this city arborist actually came from our conversation with the arborist and some of our Parks, Tree, and Rec staff. The arborist had some suggestions on ways that we could potentially lower the development cost for the landscaping but still maintain the area that's landscaping and still, and still hit our goals that we have right now by, while reducing the cost to the developer. And so, I'd like to give him some time to develop those ideas more fully. And then, the Parks Tree, the beautification committee is pretty obvious, but the Parks, Tree, and Rec Board was suggested to me in conversation because they have hands-on experience directly with a lot of our beautification projects. I mean, the Community Service Day that I was just up at two weeks ago, that was a Parks, Tree, and Rec Board beautification project. And so, they do have a lot of hands-on experience with that, and I would value their, their feedback on this type of stuff.
Thank you. Other comments by council? Counselor Weaver?
Just quickly, and Counselor Somerville will address that, but I thought Counselor Schuster's question was a valid one. I think to dig into that just a little bit more. The Parks, Tree, Recreation Advisory Board, they, they cover a lot. Granted, their main focus is parks, but they were pretty involved with the process of the art plan and things like that. So, I think that there might be some input there that would be valuable. I don't think it has to go through, you know, a long process with them, but I think it would be helpful for creating a good and thoroughly vetted change here to run it, run it through there. But this is my, my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Henry.
I have a question. So, I thought I read that any art project would be passed through the Public Art Committee. No, I didn't read that. Okay.
Counselor Somerville?
There is a piece on here that it has to be run through the policies, basically the procedure that's developed in the Laramie Public Art Plan, but the Public Art Committee does not serve as a gatekeeper for public art. It just outlines a policy and procedure on how people can, what's the best practice for developing an art project on their property.
Okay.
All right. I will, I will tell you this. I'm inclined to agree with Counselor, Counselor Schuster in that I think we're running this around. You know, these are commercial and residential sites. They're not parks, they're not rec, okay? Now, they have something in common, and that is trees, but there's other things that are in common with the, with these various groups, too. And the important group that we listen to on this was the planning commission, and they vetted it, and they vetted it very well. And keep in mind, we're not creating a new ordinance. What we're trying to do is modify the ordinance we have to make it more palatable and make it more affordable. We're not, we're not starting from scratch, if you will, so, you know, I can appreciate getting advice from everyone and so forth and so on, but this has been out there a long time. People have had an opportunity to look at it. People have had an opportunity, if they're interested, to make comments on it. These members that are on these groups, they certainly have an opportunity to write letters as individuals and so forth and so on. We've had all that happen, so in some ways, I think we're just, we're just prolonging something that doesn't need to be prolonged, and I would not be in favor of the postponement. Counselor Hanson?
So, let's say we don't postpone it, we vote on it. I'm still interested where our landscaping sliding scale is now. Is it in? Is it out? Where is it?
I'm going to refer that to staff. Charles? Mr. Senior Planner Bloom?
Honorable Mayor and Council, could you repeat that question real quick as regarding the sliding scale?
The landscaping sliding scale. Is it in the ordinance as we would be voting on it, or is it not? This was unclear to me.
Honorable Mayor and Council, as the motion stands right now, the sliding scale is included. If you wish to make an amendment to have the sliding scale taken out, you'd have to make that motion on that memo to amend the main motion. Action was standing corrected, I believe. There's still Counselor Somerville's motion on the table. So, the main motion, yes, it would include the sliding scale.
And I'm bringing up this question because I had an email today from a rather prominent citizen today who said he was opposed to the sliding scale. Everybody should be held to the same standard, so just.
Thank you. Counselor Schuster?
I understand what was just being asked there, and I got the same email, and he very definitely, because he used an example of a business before there was any landscaping ordinance. And the one thing that we stated is, we are not going back to square one. Since Ben on the planning commission about every other meeting has a request for a lesser amount of landscaping, including the high school. And the high school is absolutely beautiful, but they got their landscaping cut in half. There should be 100 more trees out there and 500 more bushes. We've had businesses that didn't even have enough open area to landscape and had to do a check and loop, which is on the sheet, and they put trees across the street, which looked very nice. Our own rec center put a very large addition onto their building and haven't done any landscaping after they did that. So, are we not held to the standard? So, I mean, I understand what people are saying. We're not going back to the beginning. We're doing a sliding scale for a business. We're not saying they get an out, that they don't have to do it or anything like that. We're saying you will meet these standards, but we have had so many businesses come forward to us and ask for relief from this that they decided to look into what would be good for We're talking about places that aren't parks, they're businesses. Will they get out of landscaping? No. Will they get to get out of landscaping by up to 25%, which is going on right now? Yes. The high school got out of 50%. How can we tell this company here that, here's our premier high school, Laramie's premier high school, and they get out of 50% of the landscaping, but you don't? I really would like to look some people and say, I don't know. I guess the school board has more power than you.
Yes.
I thought we were speaking to the postponement.
You know, we are, and this is kind of, and correct me if I'm wrong, Council, okay? I think it's difficult at this point in time to speak to a postponement if you cannot speak to the actual ordinance, because what we're really talking about is whether we should take this ordinance back to more committees or not, and that is talking exactly as Counselor Schuster addressed, as to the necessity of taking it back. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we need some latitude as to be able to discuss this postponement.
When we started, you stated that.
Yes, I did. Okay, so Counselor Henry?
So, then, I was going to vote in favor of the postponement, and another thing that I would like, that I haven't seen in the, in the revisions, and I'm sorry I wasn't here for the second reading, is that perhaps instead of people having to go to get variances and having to go to the planning commission and all that, maybe we should give a little more leeway to our planners to be able to, I mean, I don't, I can't remember the exact percentage that they're able to vary from a, from a plan. I think it's maybe 10% or 15% or did we go up to 20% or?
Honorable Mayor and Council, the percentage was recently increased to 20%. So far, no one has utilized a 20% yet. The most recent one would be the high school, which had a 10% The most recent one would be the high school, which had a 10% reduction in landscaping through alternative equivalent compliance process.
A 10%, not a 50%.
But we do allow for up to a 20% reduction, and provided that they demonstrate that there is some unique hardship or circumstances that warrant that. And those could be density, infill development, topsoil, rock formations close to ground topography, those types of items.
So, perhaps, so that's part of my reason for postponement, is maybe we could come up with something that would allow the planners during the planning process to be able to negotiate a higher percentage of variance.
But that's, go ahead. Counselor Weaver.
Speaking to that issue, Mr. Mayor, this discussion about the planners and giving them more leeway, I understand where that's coming from, but I think there's another, there's another part of that, and that's that that puts our staff potentially in a difficult position on every project that comes to the table where this issue comes up. And the leeway can be exercised in one fashion for one project and another for another project, and our staff, certainly they're professionals, but you can begin to see how this can become problematic and how people can perceive things differently. And I think that's not necessarily what we, as the policymaking body, want to do and where we want to place our planners. We need to make those decisions up here with regard to how that's going to go, as opposed to saying, well, you know, we're just going to grant some leeway to staff and let them figure it out on an individual basis. I don't think that's a functional solution. I think we're the policy board, and we need to decide, which is why I have more comfort with hard and fast percentages that they can then work with, as opposed to saying, wow, we'll see how it goes with Project A and Project B. And I think we need to keep that in mind. And regardless of whether or not this is postponed, that's unlikely, that view, for me, is unlikely to change, because I don't think it's appropriate to do that. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Schuster.
I'm sorry about the high school. I said their reduction was in trees and bushes, but they got the larger reduction. That's what I like about this, because this has a scale, and it says if you're doing this many acres, here's your reduction. If you're doing this many acres, here's your reduction. It is all spelled out in there to where the staff can go, how big's your project? How big's your open area? How much of it is parking lot? That all goes into a scale, and then it says, here's what you have to have. That's what I like about it, because then they're not put on the hot seat, well, you did for Joe Smith over there, and you did for Max over there and here, but you won't do it for me. When they have it on a document, just like you said, I love it, because then they can go, here it is, right here, black and white. We're going to make this so it's uniform for everybody. If you're going to put a very small business, and I'll just pick Forest Street, and you are going to have some open area out front, here's what you've got to have. If you're downtown, you don't have to do hardly anything. The new restaurant liquor license we did tonight, he's got 12 feet of sidewalk, and that's it. He does zero landscaping and no fee in lieu. But if we have somebody located on Forest Street, he has to have landscaping. We're not equal across the city. We're not equal at all.
One of my fears of a postponement is the whole subject of landscaping is a controversial, opinionated, huge subject. What's before us tonight is some modifications to the landscape ordinance in a narrow sense, if you look at the whole landscape ordinance. It is going to be really easy to drift off into other places that we're really not addressing in this ordinance, and we've already tried it as a council, to be honest with you, and there's been a lot of discussion about it. And frankly, I think it's basically, we've listened to it, we've had the Planning Commission give their input, which is the appropriate board for doing it. Sure, you could bring in other boards, you can bring in the beautification committee. Everybody's going to have an opinion as to what's appropriate for landscaping, but what we're really talking about is a narrow scope of the items that are on this ordinance, and frankly, we will be addressing landscaping again, and we will be adding things to it again. Now, the only thing we did last, the only direction we did last time is we said we would like to see, as a council, we said, we'd like to see something incorporated as far as art goes. We haven't even had that discussion tonight, after all the work that's been done to that. Now, if you're uncomfortable with that, and you'd rather see that segment of it go toward a committee, I'm fine with it. But let's move forward, in my mind, let's move forward with this, and let's at least pass the simple items that are before us, and then discuss what other changes need to be made. And that's just my opinion, but that's where I feel we should go with it. Counselor Somerville.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I appreciate that we've had this before the Planning Commission, and I appreciate that we've had the chamber organization look at it, but that really is only half of the puzzle. You know, when I went to the beautification committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, I immediately got, what are you guys doing? Don't you remember why we have this? And I got this history lesson from the beautification committee, and I really think that it is appropriate, and they are the appropriate people, to submit some feedback on this, as well as the Parks Tree and Rec, as well as our city arborist. I think that this is a controversial issue, which is why we have a much heavier burden to make sure that we do it right, and that we're not changing things just because we want to get it over with and get it done quickly. I think that we need to make sure that we have a good grouping of opinions and that we've heard from a large breadth of the community, because this isn't just, this isn't just affecting, you know, residential developments and commercial developments. This affects beautification projects down the line. This affects the look of the city overall. This affects whether we're going to get the next business who, you know, thinks Laramie looks nice instead of looking ugly. This is a much, much, much bigger topic than just focusing on how many dollars a developer has to spend on residential or commercial. And I really think it's appropriate to send this out to the committees, get their feedback, and then we can look at their feedback and the amendments in one package when we bring this back in October.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It occurs to me, though, about the October date, it may be very difficult to have everyone weigh in on this.
Push it a little bit more.
And then meet that deadline. Well, I don't know that, I'm not sure, because I think we, I'm not sure that we want to push it out even further, because I do think we need to get this addressed, and we need to make these changes or not make these changes, and then move forward with the policy. I think there's probably room for feedback and input even after the council's voted on it, in terms of the fleshing out how it's actually going to work. But it does concern me that we're going to move it to this date in October, which is what we're going to hopefully eventually take a vote on here. And I'm not certain at all that we'll be able to receive input from all those groups by the time this comes back up.
Okay. Let me do this. I know we've gone around a little bit, and in my mind, we're kind of saying the same thing in different ways. I know there's a couple people here that are probably here for this item. Am I incorrect on that? Is there anything you'd like to add to this conversation? Either anyone in the audience? Please come forward. And I would ask, and I would also, even though we all know you, I would ask you to identify yourself with a record.
My name is George Krell. I am the Chair of the Airport Board, and we've been talking a lot to the city and to the landscaping people regarding this matter. It involves a particular hangar in this instance, which I think we'll probably take care of because we're going to ask for zone change very shortly. And we're going to include our hangars into the, into the actual aeronautics, the physical part of the aeronautics work, not the aeronautics enterprise part. Aeronautic enterprise is associated businesses with the airport. The other zoning is the airport itself. I've listened very intently here to many of the items that you guys are talking about, and I think that, I think, I think that Councilman Somerville's suggestion is really valid, because I think you need to get the input from as many people as you can. And I think that we would have a lot of suggestions that we might want to make, although we're not included in the group that was talked about here, although we can certainly suggest a lot of things through Councilman Somerville. And we do suggest a lot of things through her. But in any case, now, I would recommend that you pass the amendment that she has proposed. Are there any questions that you have regarding the airport?
Actually, Mr. Krell, really what we're interested in is your comments and not a back-and-forth question, if you will, at this meeting.
Thank you. My comments, let me, let me put it a little different than a lot of people in Wyoming. I have experienced, in my professional career, a lot of landscaping ordinances. When I graduated from the university here in '64 and went to the city of Los Angeles and worked there, I worked for Shell Oil Company, building service stations for quite a period of time. I worked for the city of Los Angeles for a while, too. And they, at that time, and this was '64, had a very extensive, and I think that it was more extensive than what you're proposing here. So, I guess I don't see this as a real terrible imposition on someone that's coming in to build something. Now, I think that you need to talk about things a little bit differently, because you're imposing your landscaping ordinance on the city and county enterprises, too. You are imposing it on us at the airport. So, I think you need to talk about it, like Councilman Schuster said, it's on businesses. It's not only on businesses. I guess you could call us a business. But in all reality, we are part of the city. We're part of the county. And if you want to exclude us, fine. But I still think that we need to consider landscaping around the airport, too. I think the landscaping that we've done in the past has been great. I really do. So, I don't know exactly what you wanted, Mr. Mayor, but it's, it's something that I've lived with throughout my professional career.
Thank you. But anyone else? Okay, back to counsel. I would suggest we take a vote. I think everybody's pretty much made up their mind which direction they want to go. Counselor Schuster.
Please stay while we're voting on, because we're stating, voting on amendment, so everybody has that fresh in their mind.
Voting on amendment to postpone and refer it back, or refer it, not back, but refer it to two additional boards?
The Parks Tree and Rec Board, the City Arborist, and the Beautification Committee, Your Honor.
Thank you. That's what the amendment states, as is. Questions? City Clerk, would you do a roll call?
Somerville?
Yes.
Schuster?
No.
Shumway?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Hanson?
No.
Weaver?
Yes.
By tally, absent Pierce?
Yes.
Polikas?
No.
That is five yeses, three nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
So, the motion carries, and we'll postpone third reading until that date that was stated in October.
It's for eighteenth.
Eighteenth? Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Have we given enough direction to referring it back as to what we might be interested in, so they are not floundering in some kind of vacuum and bring something back that we're, that's still not suitable to us? I think we ought to give some direction, at least, or do they have enough direction, and I missed it?
I think staff has heard everything we've said, and the item, the item's been gone through, so we're moving on.
Okay. All right. Fine. Thank you.
Counselor Henry.
I just want to say that I withdraw my suggestion to give you guys more leeway. I believe what he said. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda. Would be fifteen, Your Honor. Item number fifteen, and I'll call on the Vice Mayor.
I move that council approve the at-will employment contract between the city of Laramie and Robert W. Suthard for the position of city attorney, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. I think all of you received an email from Mr. Suthard. Are there any questions that council has for staff or anyone else? Any comments from council concerning this contract?
Honorable Mayor, if I may, it's come to...
Please do.
Thank you. It's come to the city attorney's attention that there are two typographical errors. They're not substantive. Counselor Hanson was kind enough to bring those to my attention. I believe that they can be easily corrected.
Yeah.
Pretty minor typos, but one on page three, one on page four, that we will see is corrected before the final version is signed.
Thank you for bringing that forward. Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's questions for the city manager, I believe. And that is an inquiry about the condition of our budget for outside legal counsel. Now, I mean, I'm not looking for exact numbers, and I have, I have complete confidence in Mr. Suthard, and I think he's going to do an excellent job for us, but I do think it's probably worth talking a little bit about where we're at with that, and if the need should arise, that we'll need to get some outside counsel, that we still have plenty of resources available to do that.
Mayor, through you, Counselor Weaver, are you talking about budget for outside legal until Mr. Suthard comes on full-time, or just in general?
In general.
Okay. So, we do carry a small amount in the city attorney's budget for outside legal services when you need specialists, that sort of thing. I don't know off the top of my head what that amount is, but I can tell you there is a small amount, and if there is a need for more, certainly the city attorney's office could approach you for a budget amendment adjustment.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. And I'll try to look it up while I'm sitting here. Just don't know if I can go quite as quickly as your action item may go.
Thank you. Any other comments? Would anyone from the public wish to address counsel on this subject? City Clerk, would you do a roll call, please?
Somerville?
Yes.
Schuster?
No.
Shumway?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
By tally, absent Weaver?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
That is seven yeses, one no, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Item number sixteen. Counselor Schuster.
Thank you. I move to approve the amendment to the base contract between Sampson Construction Company, Inc., and the city of Laramie in the amount of $337,342 to expand the project scope of construction services, authorize an amendment to the fiscal year of 2017, 2018, by any budget, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second by Counselor Henry. Mr. Farstead.
Thank you, honorable mayor, counsel. So, I think that I summed it up fairly well in the cover sheet that was put in front of y'all, but just a quick verbal narrative for you guys. The original guaranteed maximum price we put together for this project had a few assumptions and some allowances that we were all aware of at the time, and throughout the construction process, our committed business... throughout the construction process, our committed business, tungsten heavy powder and parts, has refined, made some changes, and really put together the manufacturing process that's going to work best for his business model, all of which are incurring additional construction costs. But the majority of it is, is in mechanical and electrical systems, and then some outside peripheral items for materials transfer, et cetera. But the, the base project development agreement that we have executed allowed for him to fund any scope changes that were requested by him, which is, which is good for everybody. And the amendment, which was attachment one to the cover sheet, just, just provides the financial instrument for us to be able to do that, to get the revenue offset that we need. So, I'd be happy to open it up to any questions you all might have.
Questions? Any comments? Counselor Hanson?
Yes, something I didn't quite understand. Maybe I'm at the wrong item here, but wasn't there a statement that any additional cost would have to be borne by tungsten? Because, and I see a budget amendment in here, which confuses me, because I thought the contract or the, the state grant said, any change, you guys are responsible for it. So, why do we have a budget amendment in there? I didn't understand that.
Honorable Mayor to Counselor Hanson. Oh, that's a, that's a great, that's a great question. The, the primary reason for that is, well, let me rewind that really quick. All the, the revenue that we're asking for in this contract amendment is being offset 100% by the committed business, by tungsten heavy powder and parts. But the reason that we're doing it in this fashion, the primary reason is for construction logistics and building systems, because if we maintain our contract with the builder, and they can let these subcontracts for additional work out, it, it keeps the building warranty in place for all systems. It maintains positive schedule, and it's a, it's just, it's a better construction practice to do it this way. But attachment two, to the cover sheet as well, that shows the restricted account that was set up by tungsten to fund these changes. So, does that?
That, I think it makes it clear, in other words, this is a zero amount on the city budget.
Honorable Mayor, Counselor Hanson, correct. 100% revenue offset.
I just wanted to be clear on this, because it showed up as a budget amendment, and they usually mean money, and so I was confused. Thank you.
Other comments by council?
Good question. Honorable Mayor, Counselor Hanson, Mr. Derrigan was just, was speaking behind me, but the, the budget amendment component of it is just that we have legal spending authority to fund it, knowing that we have the revenue offset, so.
Because it is a grant, it came in under a grant. Okay, thank you. But we are staying within the confines of the grant, which said any additional cost will have to be borne by the individual.
Mayor, Council, you're 100% correct.
Thank you.
And it's my understanding that the, the client has already deposited that money.
Money, yeah.
So, we're, in essence, we're just doing an accounting procedure, the authorization for this change order. Okay, anything else from council? Anyone from the public wish to comment? I think we've about, oh, we've got a few people left. City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Schuster?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
By tally, absent Weaver?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number seventeen. Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, but it's, it's, that's not the issue. It is the name of the appointee that escapes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I, I have to admit, my powers of memory are not so great that I can remember the entirety of the appointee's name, and it is not in our documents.
Is there someone from staff that could help? There we go.
I'm hoping the director FISA will come to the rescue.
Good thing you stayed.
Honorable Mayor, through you, without looking back on the emails, I think it was Nick Carlson?
That is correct. And far, far from what I was going to guess. And, Mr. Mayor, let me just say this now. The, the fact that I could not remember Mr. Carlson's name should not have any bearing on his selection as a member. He was incredibly qualified, and I believe he should be very grateful that he's willing to do this. So, I move that council approve Resolution 2016-62, declaring that one vacancy exists on the Parks, Tree and Recreation Advisory Board, and that Nick Carlson be appointed to fill the vacancy on the Parks, Tree and Recreation Advisory Board for a term expiring on December 31st, 2018, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
There's a motion and a second by the Vice Mayor. Counselor Weaver, do you have any further comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just say this. Yes, Mr. Carlson was a rare applicant to that committee in that he had some experience working for a city parks department in Illinois, and had some very interesting things and ideas and skills to bring to our advisory board, and I think he's going to be an excellent appointee, despite my ability to remember his name or not remember his name, if you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any further comments by council? Anyone from the public wish to comment? City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Weaver?
Yes.
By tally, absent Hanson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
That is eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number eighteen, future council work sessions. Do we have any? Counselor Somerville?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one suggestion for the group, and I'm open to feedback here. I wonder if we would be able to schedule a work session, maybe October 25th? I don't see any work sessions on that. To basically present to the council and go over the WAM financial recommendations that the committee put together, as well as we should have been to, WAM will have gone to the corporations committee, and get some feedback, and just kind of go over what that, that, those recommendations and what the feedback was going into the next following year, and prior to the election.
Thank you. Agreed?
Yeah.
I'm seeing heads nodding, so.
And I would defer to city manager, if she thinks the first date in October, I think which was the 11th or the 25th would be better. I was thinking the 25th, because I think it's after the meeting.
Yeah, I think the 25th would be best. We'll know, we'll know the most at that point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Other work session? I had one, and the chief mentioned it, and I think it may already be on, but he, as he explained to us in a very brief explanation during the announcements concerning our fire rating, I thought maybe it would be good to go into maybe just a half hour detail of what that all means, what would it take to move it to the next level, and so forth, and so on, just so we have an understanding of it. And maybe we could tag that on to the same work session. City manager, possible, at that date? And I don't think it's a long, I think it'd be just a half hour work session. Counselor?
Very good idea, because this has significant insurance ramifications, as far as businesses and even private homes are concerned.
Yes, thank you. All right. Any, any other suggestions on a work session? Okay, move on to the last item, and I think our assistant manager, is there any names on there? All right. Last item is public comment on non-agenda items. I assume the two people in the audience have no public comment at this time. Thank you. I'll turn item number 20 over to Counsel Hanson.
Thank you, Honorable. Move that council to adjourn.
A second.
Motion and a second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.